Good afternoon. At this time, I will call our City Council work session to order. We do have one item of business on our open part of our work session. It's a residential development overview which will address secondary access, minor subdivisions, paper streets, and infill housing. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As you recall at previous meetings, you've asked us and staff to bring back, thank you, bring back staff reports on items related to new development, and you've named several of them. We also be talking about maybe cul-de-sac links and items of that nature. But this presentation is going to be led off by Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes, followed by interim, or excuse me, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development Kevin Wine, and followed up by Mr. Lewis, our Director of Public Works. Kevin?
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, the manager did a pretty good job of outlining what you're going to see today, but I want to set some expectations and kind of set the table before I hand it off to Kevin who's got the bulk of this presentation. We are hitting on four different topics. These are topics that from different times and occasions, you receive phone calls, questions. We received phone calls and questions from citizens as well. They can be sometimes, generally speaking, simple, but when you get down to some of the brass tacks and details of them and specific parcels throughout the city, can be very involved. And we think to do it justice, we need to spend time providing a lot of information, detailed information on each one of these topics. So just wanted to make sure that your expectations are that you want to be comfortable, buckle in, because we're going to take you on a ride with a lot of visuals and a lot of detailed information and a lot of different examples related to each one of these topics, because they are very important. Suffolk's a very diverse city. We deal oftentimes with this body on major rezonings and subdivisions that have current standards and ordinances in place. And so a lot of that stuff that you can feel secure are going to be dealt with during the development process. A lot of what we're going to talk about today are a little bit outside of that area. And so some of those details and nuances that we experience are dealt with time over different periods, different ordinance that have been set in place through different time periods, different councils. The other thing that adds some challenges to us, not some, they're real challenges that you're aware of, is other regulatory bodies. And so we have a role, but so does the Health Department, depending on the project and the property, and so does the Army Corps of Engineers. And so we have a very significant role in this, but so do other regulatory agencies that we don't have control over but play a very important role related to this. So with that, I'm going to, again, just reintroduce you to the four topics that we have this afternoon. Secondary access, which we spent a little bit of time with on the Committee on Ordinances. And so we're going to share with you a recommendation related to the current ordinance and how it's reviewed. The residential development within the agricultural district, which includes the minor subdivision. I think we'll touch on family transfers as well. And then conclude with paper streets and infill development. Again, there will be a lot of information as it relates to what it is, how we review it, and give you a good breadth of examples so you get a good flavor for what we experience in submittals. And then again, phone calls that you're receiving or questions that you may receive from your constituents. And so without further ado, Kevin Wine will take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for the introduction, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Kevin was correct. He hit the nail on the head when he said buckle up. You're in for a ride. These are diverse topics. However, in a lot of ways, they're not, they're related in some fashion. So we felt compelled to share them kind of during one presentation here. So it is quite lengthy. I will be thorough. And my goal this evening is to kind of do a deep dive on all of these topics and really present what our regulations from the city's perspective is as it relates to these very important items. So the first, we'll touch on, label it secondary access. It's actually interrelated to a variety of our subdivision improvement standards, primarily as it relates to major residential subdivisions. So we'll begin here with a review of our street improvement standards. And specifically, we'll talk about secondary access and how it plays a role in the development of these residential subdivisions. So there are really four topics that we're going to hit on that fall under our street improvement standards. Our street improvement standards, as it relates to subdivisions, it seeks to accomplish an interconnected street network. That's the primary goal. We reach this goal through the street improvement standards, which are outlined in Section 31612 of the Unified Development Ordinance. As a part of today's discussion, I'll provide an overview of these four components that make up the regulations in an effort to create a better connected public street system. I think include connectivity, which will be the first topic I touch on. I'll walk you through some visuals that predated our current UDO, which was adopted in 1999. And you'll see some of the fruits of the labor there with some examples from present day where you see these street improvements visualized through development approval. Second, we'll touch on secondary access. That is when you exceed a certain number of subdivision lot cuts, you are required to provide a secondary access point from an existing public right-of-way. Three, we'll talk street stubs and temporary cul-de-sacs. That's a little bit more nuanced, but one of our development standards is when you are immediately adjacent to undeveloped land and you are developing, you are required to make a logical stub out from a public street to that property. And lastly, as a part of this discussion, we'll touch on the limitations on the maximum allowable length of dead-end streets or cul-de-sacs. So key factors, all of these are key factors that play a role in whether these regulations are applicable, specifically as it relates to the form of development. So we'll touch on that briefly as well. But primarily, these come into play with whether a major subdivision is proposed or not. Sometimes they're not, but condominium forms of development, a lot of development we're seeing here recently as it relates to multifamily or tenplex or fourplex development, no subdivisions proposed as a part of that. So these standards don't necessarily come into play, because the applicability falls on whether there's a major subdivision or not. Lastly, in this first part of the section, I will touch on, I'll provide an overview of the relief mechanism. Occasionally, there are legitimate bona fide applications for development that cannot necessarily meet these standards, and those are handled through a subdivision variance. However, the three items that I'm going to touch on in depth here handle that differently. One can be administrative. The other two does require City Council action through the subdivision variance process. So I will bring you up to speed on that. So first, we'll talk connectivity. This is, in all honesty, one of our more confusing standards in our Unified Development Ordinance. This image on the screen here, straight out of our Unified Development Ordinance, I've modified it a little bit, but connectivity is defined as street links divided by nodes. Street links are represented here in red. On the left-hand side of your screen, you have a well-connected community. On the right-hand side of your screen, you have a less well-connected community. And street links are, their primary purpose is, you know, to function from intersection point to intersection point. So a full street block, if you will. Nodes are the points where they intersect. So the end of any street link and the beginning of a new one, or the terminus of a street link with a cul-de-sac, for instance. So the more cul-de-sacs, the less well-connected a community is. So in the examples on your screen here, you have 14 street links on the left-hand side to nine nodes. That results in a connectivity ratio of 1.56. That meets our minimum standard. Our minimum standard needs to be at least 1.4 or greater. On the right-hand side of your screen, you have six links to six nodes. Six divided by six leads you to one. That is a connectivity ratio of one. That is not a subdivision we could approve under our current street improvement standards. Here's a real-life example, and this predated our UDO. This is Bayberry Cove off of Pewsville and north of Bob White Lane. In this example, once again, the red lines depict your street links. Stars depict the nodes. You have 23 links, I'll save you the counting, 23 links to 22 nodes, which results in a connectivity ratio of 1.05. This, once again, is a subdivision that does not meet our current standards within the UDO. Brainstorming, in a perfect world, they controlled more property, or the UDO was in effect when this was developed. You would see the connecting of some of these nodes to get a more looped system, a better connected system for circulation access around it in its entirety. The next example I will share with you is a more recent subdivision. This was approved within the last three years. Did require rezoning to get there. This is the Nansman Reserve Community on Sleepy Hole Road. At this point, it has been built out. Once again, you have the street links in red. The stars represent your nodes. And here, we have 11 links to seven nodes. This results in a ratio of 1.57, which does meet our minimum requirement of 1.4. You will note that on the bottom of your screen here, there's a cul-de-sac. This is one of the temporary cul-de-sacs that was required to make a connection point to the property to itself. As in providing those temporary cul-de-sacs, those do not count as a node against your connectivity ratio. And I'll get into that a bit later in this first section. So let's transition to secondary access. Here's the UDO requirement as it reads straight out of Section 31612F regarding secondary access. And what it says is secondary access shall be provided for major subdivisions of 25 or more lots. Additionally, there's some language that secondary access streets shall be routed to avoid hazard areas such as floodways. But this requirement is not linked to units, but specifically major subdivisions, which includes anything greater than four lots. Tying this requirement to major subdivisions stays true to the overall goal of the creation of an interconnected street network, as we require street stubs to be logically created for adjacent undeveloped parcels. The clear regulation mechanism is individual major subdivisions. It's important to note that major subdivisions of 24 lots or less do not require a secondary access Here we have a really good example, actually, of a subdivision that required two access points. This is Wildwood Cove, currently under construction on Pewsville Road, north of Pewsville Road. It just so happens to be a subdivision of 25 lots, meaning that they had to provide two separate access points off of Pewsville Road. However, and I'll stress during this portion of the conversation, these issues that I'm touching on are inherently connected. Generally, when you have issues meeting one of the standards, you'll have issues meeting the other two that I'm going to discuss. For instance, a good example, the link that you have on the right-hand side, this would be the eastern side of the property. If that goes away, suddenly you no longer meet connectivity, and you potentially have an issue with cul-de-sac length as well. And I'll touch on those in a moment. So here is also a relatively new subdivision, just so happens to be 17 lots. This is Chucka Tuck Cove Development in Eclipse. And it was a major subdivision of 17 lots, and they only required, as a result, one access point off of Eclipse Drive. So the Unified Development Ordinance is not the only document that regulates secondary access requirements. FIRE Code, in fact, requires that a secondary access be provided for 30 or more single-family residential units or 100 or more multifamily units. The reason those numbers are so different is because once you get into multifamily development, building code and FIRE Code requirements are much more stringent than on single-family properties. But it's important to understand that FIRE Code's secondary access requirements differs from the city's public street standards. Essentially, to satisfy those requirements, a developer could construct just a glorified driveway. And a lot of times, we'll see them, in fact, create an access drive that's gated with a Knox box so emergency services can get through. The purpose of our requirement is to ensure, going back to an interconnected street network, that pedestrians, fire, public safety, and public services have adequate means of ingress egress to a site. So the second bullet here, why major subdivision versus number of lots? And I think that's a great question, and it goes back to the intent of our code, which is to ensure that new residential developments have sufficient access to established public streets. If it shifted to units, that could impact areas of the city where only one means of access in and out currently exists for whatever reason. And this isn't necessarily unique in the city, whether it be existing development patterns, environmental constraints, or some various other issue. And this could potentially negatively impact the development potential in these areas where there are, that are certainly within our established growth areas. Additionally, and I've noted on this a couple of times now, but temporary cul-de-sacs are required for new development within the city, which assists with the development potential of adjacent undeveloped land. And once stubbed out, individual developments have the same opportunity to develop within the confines of our current regulations. So temporary cul-de-sacs. Here's what, I'm not going to read all of this, but wherever a proposed development abuts, unplatted land or a future development phase of the same development, street stubs shall be provided to provide access to abutting properties. Kind of moving along with this, the director does have the ability to waive that requirement if a good argument is presented, or justification can be found. But generally, it's not. So I'll walk you through a couple of examples of what that looks like in practice. Here we have a development. This is Brewer's Meadow. The undeveloped property to the south is Brewer's Meadow South. For all intents and purposes, there are two different phases of the same development, but they did go through a separate development process, particularly Brewer's Meadow South did seek a rezoning for that property. The stars represent where the northern part of this development, and this is off of Turlington Road, where the northern part of the development stubbed out to the southern portion, which is currently under development. And it's going to be, if memory recalls, 68 units to the south. So you have logical extensions of a street network that's being created. So they will go on, and you can see in this aerial where some of the land's already been cleared for these connections. Additionally, this allows for ample intersection separation along Turlington Road. So there will ultimately be three access points from Turlington Road. And this allows a development to, one, increase ingress egress to a site, but also being able to do it safely. Cul-de-sacs. So I mentioned, this is kind of the third bullet. Cul-de-sacs, and once again, this is directly from our ordinance. The highlighted red area depicts what a cul-de-sac is. And it is measured from the last intersection that allows for two separate points of ingress egress. And this is for newly created public streets. This section regulates the maximum allowable cul-de-sac length as it applies to newly created major subdivisions. And the denser a zoning district, the shorter the allowable cul-de-sac length is. So a good example, in your ag district, not that anyone could come in and necessarily build a street now, but it's 1,000 feet in length. Getting into your more intense residential districts, the ones that we commonly see are C, the Residential Compact Zoning District, and R U, Residential Urban, that decreases to 300 feet. And those are generally the districts where someone may need to apply for a subdivision variance if they're having some sort of variance if they're having some sort of issue from a dimensional or topographic standpoint to meeting that minimum regulation. In this case, the maximum allowable. So, once again, going back to a subdivision that was predated our current UDO, we're kind of picking on Bob White Lane. This is Fennel Court and Fennel Lane, just north of Bob White Lane, not far from Bayberry Cove. You can see that in the, off to your right-hand side here. But this is something that just would not be permitted with today's standards, because from the center line of Bob White Lane to the end of Fennel Lane, that's about 1,600 feet long, clearly exceeding what in the zoning district would allow for of 800 feet. So, variances. I noted early on here that we do have a procedure to allow for relief to these standards. Variances to secondary access and connectivity standards require a subdivision variance in which City Council is the deciding body. Variances to cul-de-sac length standards are regulated in a special section of 31612 of the UDO, which allows for administrative approval by the director. Once again, generally, when a developer needs to seek a variance for one of these requirements, they have to seek a variance potentially for the others. They kind of go hand in hand in a lot of ways. So, to summarize Section 1 here before we go into Section 2, which is residential development in the agricultural district, I'll just kind of encapsulate our thoughts here. But in summary, our connectivity and access standards, they're good planning practice, and they've been designed to help to create functional, safe, attractive, and well-connected communities. Good access leads to improved efficiency, and it assists in allowing for the efficiency of emergency services and public services alike, while ensuring public health and safety is protected. So that's kind of their intent, and in practice, I believe they've illustrated that they accomplish what they seek to do. Staff does suggest making two ordinance text amendments related to this section. One, that we align the number of permitted lots within major subdivisions with what the FIRE Code allows. Right now, major subdivisions of greater than 24 lots require secondary access. FIRE Code for single-family requires that for 30 or more, so we would be shifting that to 30 units. Additionally, we recommend modifying the variance process for cul-de-sac lengths to go before City Council, like the companion requests that may come your way. This has been discussed and vetted with our committee on ordinances, the Subcommittee of the Planning Commission. Last month, we had a very similar conversation with them regarding this issue. Yesterday, we did present them with a draft, and they are going to consider that amendment at their meeting next month. All right, shifting gears, we will jump into residential development within the agricultural district. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think it may be advised, since we have four distinct categories, rather than, so everybody's thought process is the same time when we finish one, maybe we'll open it up for questions and comments, and then go to the next, if it meets with everybody's approval. And with that, I'll recognize Councilman Goldberg has a question.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I've got two or three questions.
Okay, yes, sir.
And maybe I missed it, because I was a little late getting into, get here. Why did the, where did the 1.54 come from, that percentage?
The 1.54?
Uh-huh.
For that particular, I believe that was, for the example I showed, I'll go back to the screen here, for Nansman Reserve, that is what they demonstrated. The R within the UDO, our maximum allowable connectivity, is 1.4. So it has to exceed 1.4. Where that number came from, I'm not sure, but that is our minimum requirement. They have to demonstrate that they can exceed it.
See, 1.4?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to exceed it?
To exceed it.
Okay, all right, all right. And let me ask you another thing. We have a lot of, well, the topography that we have doesn't always offer the ability to have connectivity. How do we handle that?
Through the subdivision variance process.
Through the variance process.
And very specifically, there are four criteria that have to be demonstrated, and I believe two of them relate to topography, another environmental constraints, which we also see a lot of.
We see a lot of that.
And lastly, kind of the development patterns of the contiguous properties, looking at the dimensions of the properties, whether they're too restrictive. So, the hardships they have to demonstrate are very specific, which allows us to evaluate them appropriately.
Well, I wouldn't want the topography situation stop something from happening, just because of, you know, you can't have the connectivity, because it's a wetlands next to it, or whatever it might be. That'd be difficult to do, and you limit some beautiful property that could have some beautiful homes built on it. And why, what's the, why do we have a limitation for the length?
For the cul-de-sac length?
For the length. We say 1,000 feet, 300 feet. Why do we have a limitation?
Once again, it goes back to our goal, to achieve a well-connected street system. Generally, the longer, well, in general, dead-end streets are not great. So, the purpose there is to limit the number of dead-end streets we have, and certainly, the longer they get, the more potentially problematic they are. They're further from, you know, your principal archerials and things of that nature that do offer good connected access.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment?
If I could add on to what Kevin just said, Council, is basically, when we talk about the longer or the more dense type development on a cul-de-sac, you know, when we're coming in with public safety, or really with services, I'm thinking of our solid waste trucks, and trying to get those in and out of area, having a conductivity, the ability to get in and out and move to other streets, and more efficient type transportation links, it's better for our services and delivery. But I also go back to, and this is personal experience, I go back years when, and I don't want to pick on our neighbors, Virginia Beach, but the way they rapidly developed in the 70s and early 80s, you can go down to some of those neighborhoods, make the first wrong turn, and 15 minutes later, you can get out of that neighborhood to make the next turn without being able to cut across. They don't, there are some neighborhoods that developed in the 70s, 80s, that really didn't have the connectivity that we've strived to get through the UDO, and that was one of the major purposes, as I recall, going back to the late 90s, when this was being developed.
Counsel, any other questions or comments on this segment? Mr. Wine, I do have a couple of questions for you. If, I think I understand that at least two proposed ordinance changes that staff's recommending, and it's also going through planning, and the first one is to increase the number of homes that will require, that will be allowed on a cul-de-sac from 25 to 30? Is that correct? So it aligns with the fire department standard?
Yes, and I wouldn't say necessarily the purpose is to increase the number. The purpose is to align with what FIRE Code requires. Through that, yes, it will increase the number from 24 lots to 30 that could be developed with one individual access point.
I mean, but from a planning standpoint, because you're exactly right, the fire department access doesn't need to be a street. It could be an adjoining street across the yard, as long as they can get there, from what I understand. So, the requirements are differently. So my question would be, what adverse effects or what problems could it create, if any, by going from 25 to 30, not even considering the fire department standard? Are there any, is there any downside to that that you can see?
Any downside to?
To going from 25 to 30?
I think it's a logical change that would align us with the FIRE Code as it relates to it. Right now, the UDO is more restrictive as it relates to that access. So it would relieve potential issues, for instance, the development that has 25 lots. They didn't have to provide a secondary access for fire. They did for the city. So, as it relates to the additional allowance of six units, we've vetted it and don't foresee it to be potentially problematic.
Okay, and my other question is concerning the second proposed ordinance change, and I couldn't quite hear how it affected the cul-de-sac, if you could repeat that?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, we touched on connectivity and the secondary access as a part of our conversation. Those, right now, if someone needs to seek relief to those requirements, they would file a subdivision variance, and that would go through the public hearing process with the Planning Commission recommendation to you all to make the final decision on it. For whatever reason, it was determined that, at some point, cul-de-sac length could be considered administratively by the Director of Planning. We think that with them being so related, generally, if you're having topographic issues or environmental issues on your property, and you're struggling to meet the secondary access requirement, or the connectivity requirement, you probably are struggling to meet the minimum standards related to cul-de, maximum allowable cul-de-sac length. So with that being said, we think the proper channel for approval is with the other two items through this public hearing process through City Council.
Okay, so what you're saying is, that would be handled administratively?
It would not be handled administratively. It is administratively now handled.
Okay.
But it would shift to be in a public hearing.
Okay, and in regards to the cul-de-sacs, I'm going back to Chucka Tuck Cove.
Yes, sir.
We had an issue with a cul-de-sac in an existing development, and then, an adjoining property was submitting a plan that more or less opened up that cul-de-sac into the other development. Can you explain that process? It was kind of a loophole, if you will, to circumvent the intent of the UDO? Is this something that needs to be addressed and changed in the code?
On our review, and that's a great question, in our review, we've not determined that there was any loophole or circumvention necessarily of our street improvement standards as it relates to major subdivision development. And that's why we kind of go back to how secondary access is defined, which specifically major subdivisions of 25 lots or more. There's an inherent conflict with our requirement to stub out two adjacent undeveloped lands, and looking at their potential development potential. So, with that being said, each major subdivision stands on its own. If there's a stubbed-out public access to it, and they're not going to exceed 25 lots as a part of that subdivision, then they have their access point to tie into. We would look at cul-de-sac length as well. That would come into play. They would have to meet on their property the minimum cul-de-sac length from that provided access point.
So you're saying that adjoining development could stub into that cul-de-sac and create another 24 units or 25 units?
Provided they demonstrate they can meet our street improvement standards and all subdivision requirements.
So now we've really got a cul-de-sac hooked to a cul-de-sac, so it's not 24, it could be 48?
Off of one access point, back to a public street? Yes.
Okay, I mean, to me, I mean, I'm, to me, it seems like that could be a problem. If you've got, the whole purpose, we're going through this 24, 25, 30 scenario, and now you're saying it's feasible to open up that cul-de-sac that's adjacent to another piece of property, and because it's a different property owner, then they have created their own limit of an additional 24. So in essence, you've got up to 48 on a single cul-de-sac, and if the limit's 500, and you got 500 in this one and 500 on that one, then hadn't you just created 1,000 when you get to the end of the second development, just stubbed into the first one? And if so, this seems to be problematic to me, anyhow.
And I agree, it can certainly be problematic. However, you have to look at, there are several communities in the city, around the city, where there's one main point of access out and back, Parkside, all of Bob White Lane, Eclipse. So effectively, what you would be doing is eliminating any potential development within those communities, if you were to shift from defining it, to hooking it to a major subdivision.
You'd have to create another access.
Yes.
Because you wouldn't be able to use that existing access.
Yes, sir.
I just, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it's something that we need to take a look at, because we've kind of defeated the purpose. If hypothetically, it could be 48 and 1,000 versus 24 and 500. So anyhow, something for down the road. Counsel, anybody, so, Councilman Goldberg? Hold it, let me get you turned on, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Just on that same thought that you had, in that Chucka Tuck Cove, for example, if the design of that shows, of that 300 feet, the limit that you have for 300 feet, shows that if you take another little twist, and maybe it's 320 feet, but you have a better design for use, maybe more of a green area that you could keep, and maybe a better design, is there any leeway in that situation to allow that to happen?
The subdivision variance process. However, in that particular scenario, if you can meet the minimum requirements as established, I believe at that point, it's very difficult to demonstrate that a variance would be required to develop the site.
I have a difficult time with that one, because I see, I certainly looked at that, and I saw that a much improved little subdivision by making that adjustment, where someone would not have a road right in front of his front door, by the way that the city was requiring, as opposed to what the other design would have been, and maybe there was a longer, it was a greater length from however you figure that. And I find that to be problematic for me, anyway, not allowing that to happen, and then with the additional land that's behind it. Another owner, he has a right, they have a right to develop their land, too. So you have that cul-de-sac, and then you can, I mean, that's why you have the cul-de-sac. So you can branch off of that into the other person's, he has, they have a right. You can't landlock someone, can you, legally? Can we landlock someone?
And that goes back to the purpose of offering temporary cul-de-sacs or stub outs. But as it relates to your specific question regarding if there's a better design available, that's relative, whether there's a better design available. They have to demonstrate that they meet, that there are legitimate hardship on those four points, as identified in our ordinance. And it's hard to demonstrate that there's a legitimate hardship on all of those points when an acceptable alternative that does meet our minimum standards is offered.
Even though it might, it doesn't offer as much green space, or what have you, that could have been there?
Well, we do have minimum requirements for open space, so if they can provide us a design that meets our minimum open space requirements, then additional open space, why, absolutely, from a planning perspective, we would love it. If they can meet the minimum ones with the alternative design, then that wouldn't necessarily be a consideration.
I don't want to get into debate, debate here on philosophies, but I find it problematic, and I would, I would definitely want to talk about it somewhere sometime, or how that's done, and make sure that we are fair to all the landowners and their opportunity, and not be stammered in some way. Thank you, Mayor.
One point of clarification, I'm sorry, if you just indulged me in something, one point of clarification, I'll make sure it's clear, as we talk about these cul-de-sacs. Generally, we will not extend a street off of a cul-de-sac, a true cul-de-sac, because it's designed to be the terminus of a road, and it does not have access. What Kevin has been speaking of- What Kevin has been speaking of oftentimes is what we're calling temporary cul-de-sacs. So the road is extended all the way to the property line, there's a temporary bulb put on the side, and it is not in right-of-way, it's actually in an easement. And as purpose there is, in order for us to put these streets into maintenance and get VDOT to pay us payments on it, we had to meet certain minimum standards. And we meet those with the temporary cul-de-sacs until such time as the road extends. So what happens when that next adjoining property owner wants to utilize it? They come in, they pick the street up, and they carry it forward into the next one, and they're required to remove that temporary bulb, and all that property goes back to the property owner of the house in which it's fronted in. So just at the end, it looks like a continuous street, like it was intended to be there. This is all temporary. So again, there's just a little bit of nuance in that as to how that works. Yes, sir.
Councilperson, Bob Marlowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wine, thank you for the presentation. It's complicated, and appreciate you trying to clarify it for us. I have a question about Chucka Tuck Cove as well. Do you know what the current connectivity is, the ratio is, for that development?
No, ma'am, I do not, off the top of my head, but I can certainly find that information.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. We try to join.
All right. All right. So we'll move on to another topic of conversation that you all have discussed previously, but specifically residential development within our agricultural district. This is agriculturally zoned land. Generally, it is outside of our growth areas, generally because there are ag zone properties within our growth areas. But it's, there are primarily two types of applications we see as it relates to development within these agricultural zoned areas, minor subdivisions and family transfers. And the city sees and processes far more minor subdivision applications than it does family transfer applications. And during this portion of the presentation, I'll touch on what differentiates a minor subdivision from a family transfer, and how many cuts can be made, and how that number is determined and applied, the minimum lot size requirements, and the approvals and trends for each of those types of developments. So what is a minor subdivision? A minor subdivision is the division of any land that will result in the creation of not more than four lots, including the parent tract that fronts on an existing street. Essentially, anything not meeting this definition is a major subdivision, and major subdivisions are not permitted within the agricultural zoning district. There are two other largely agricultural zoning districts that we have, our rural residential zoning district and our rural estate zoning district. The least dense of those districts is actually the rural estate, which only allows, which requires three-acre lots. Major subdivisions are permitted within the rural estates and rural residential zoning districts, provided they can demonstrate certain things, but only certain land use patterns. They have to be cluster subdivision in order to do that. And there are a handful of them, but traditionally, you'll see these much larger lots as part of a new subdivision, and that's where they're located. So the focus of this conversation is not necessarily those projects, but the minor subdivision process and how the city regulates those applications. So how are cuts determined? If cuts have taken place, well, you're only allowed a certain number of cuts. And what's the date of applicability for that? It's March 1, 1970. So we look at the parent tract as it was in March 1, 1970. If any cut of that parent tract has occurred after that date, it counts against the property on a cumulative basis. So if you made a cut here, a cut there, suddenly you have one cut plus a residue left to you, so effectively two cuts. A lot of properties in our agricultural district have exhausted their available cuts, and they cannot be cut any further. So looking back, it is three lots plus a residue, three lots plus a residue from March 1, 1970. Anything before that would not count against the parent tract. So here we have a, this isn't the most recent example, but I think this serves as a good example. This is on West Liberty Spring Road. These are much larger lots than we are typically seeing in today's environment, all about three and a half acres or so. But on this plat, you have the creation of four lots. Here you have what we call the parent tract. This is the parent tract, the property in its entirety, and it is yielding four separate cuts, three cuts, and then one is held as the residue, which certainly has its development capabilities left. Here on the next slide, you'll see this subdivision in real life. Once again, these are much larger lots, but those arrows are pointing down to the houses that have been built and constructed on those lots. And this is a process that we go through a lot. We've saw well over 100 minor subdivision applications last year. Mind you, not all of them are creating lots. Our minor subdivision process also allows for boundary line adjustments or property line vacations. And I'll get into the trends in a moment and what we are seeing in real life, but this is what it looks like. We do have minimum requirements for the establishment of a minor subdivision parcel in our agricultural district. One, they must have 150 feet of road frontage, no exceptions. If you do not meet that requirement, you cannot yield a cut. If you have one property now that is 299 feet at the road, you fall one foot short, and you will not be able to subdivide it. Properties must be one acre in size. Any lot created must be an acre in size. The residue will have to be an acre in size upon approval. The same owner may not yield more than three cuts plus a residue for contiguously owned property. And that's in accordance with 31506B 3B of the Unified Development Ordinance. Minor subdivisions are administrative approvals. They are approved by the Director of Planning and Community Development. Here you have an illustration of how those things are determined. Once again, it must front on a public road. It has to be 150 feet wide at the road, and it needs to be a minimum of one acre. Additional requirements, for instance, it has to be set back 50 feet from the road. So here we can see our trends. This is the five-year trend, and this isn't necessarily the amount of subdivision plats we've reviewed. These are the certificates of occupancy our building official has issued within agricultural areas for residential structures. So this is residential new construction within the agricultural zoning district. So in 2017, five years ago, we only issued 23 of those. Then there was a big increase in 2018, that increased to 67. And then we reached our five-year high in 2019, at 71 certificates of occupancy issued. And now that's kind of trending down. We seem to be on the other side of that. Perhaps it's normalizing a little bit. We still have several developers who, certainly, this is the red and butter, the minor subdivision process and developing residential structures in the agricultural areas. So as noted, we, over the last five years, we've averaged 54 certificate of occupancies on average. Once again, in 2019, our high was reached, that was 71. And then the last two years, COs are trending in a downwards direction. This is important. This is one of our principles and values straight from the comp plan. It's principle value six, which states to preserve the agricultural heritage and character of the city. The plan continues the ideals of its predecessor, the 2026 Comprehensive Plan regarding the preservation of agricultural land. Specifically, the public strongly supported this value during public meetings, as residents of rural villages and areas emphasize their love for the rural way of life, and the general public voiced support for varied landscapes and rural natural assets. So as adequate capacity exists within the vicinity of the identified growth areas in the central and northern parts of the city, the more rural southern portions of the city should be preserved for low-density agricultural uses. Presently, our regulations on minor subdivisions are clear. However, we do believe there are some opportunities for clarification, specifically as it relates to the parent tract and as it is defined in March 1, 1970. The parent tract as defined is the meets and bounds of the property as it existed in 1970, which should not necessarily afford the ability to shift available cuts from one parcel to the other if certain things aren't in place, like adequate road frontage or one property is inundated with wetlands. That's by default allowing more cuts than is available to the adjacent parcel. Further, the existing language in this code section could benefit from some additional clarity to really reinforce our intent. And presently, staff is drafting some language for future City Council consideration in an attempt to limit any misinterpretation of our current regulations on subdivision, minor subdivisions currently. So moving along, we'll talk, this is still under the same heading, Section 2 of the presentation today, but the family transfer subdivisions. This, at one time, was quite problematic, and we processed much more family transfer subdivision applications than we currently do. And that's because there were some attempts at circumventing the ordinance. But it's a very specific process for a very specific purpose, and that's the division of a lot or parcel into two lots or more for the purpose of sale or gift to an immediate family member. And that's defined as a spouse, legally defined offspring, sibling, grandchild, grandparent, or parent. And this would be through a fee simple dedication to the original lot or parcel. So for the purpose of this ordinance, the conveyance of a trust or life estate established for an immediate family member is defined shall be considered a sale or gift to an immediate family member. Here's an example, a real-life example, and I think it's important to share this to illustrate some of the distinctions between the minor subdivision requirements versus some of the exceptions afforded to folks who go through the family transfer process. But here in red, you have the limits, the bounds of the parent tract in its entirety. And then here, we have a family transfer parcel that was cut out. I believe this is on Manning Road, and it wasn't terribly long ago. But immediately, you may notice that this parcel created does not have road frontage. That is a special exception that is afforded to the family transfer process. And I'll get into these key differences here, but minor subdivisions, they must meet our minimum lot standards. That is the same as our agricultural minor subdivision process. So you're talking one-acre lots minimum, 150 feet wide. There may not be road frontage, but 150 feet wide. Key differences include that they must be deeded to an immediate family member. We require a deed of gift to be provided to the city upon submission and ultimately executed upon approval. Additionally, it must be held by that family member who is receiving it for 10 years. And we require the submission of a sworn affidavit at the time indicating that it will be. Occasionally, they may seek relief at City Council from that requirement, but it must be held by the immediate family member for 10 years. Road frontage is not required. That's one of the key differences. They may use an easement. Generally, these are being cut out. There are not other properties involved, it's one parent tract, so we will allow them to plat some sort of ingress egress easement to ensure access to that property that will go with the property. These are limited to the agricultural zoning districts, rural residential or rural estate only. Outside of these zoning districts, you may not file a family transfer application. And lastly, this is a very important distinction, Planning Commission is the approval body for family transfers. So not the Director of Planning and Community Development, but family, but Planning Commission. I noted that the trends there are really minimal. We don't see a ton of these applications. I think that's because we put in pretty effective regulations to keep folks from potentially circumventing the process. But we receive, on average, over the last five years, about seven applications annually. Four of those get to the point of approval through the Planning Commission. So that kind of concludes Section 2 on residential development within the agricultural area. So I'll throw it back.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wine. Counsel, questions or comments? Want to speak, Councilman Johnson?
Hey, Kevin.
Hold it, let me get, once I hit your button, leave it alone.
Old habits.
Hold it, I'm gonna try again, one minute. Now what? Here it goes. Now do not touch it.
And don't touch it. Don't touch it. I got it. My concern, you know, there's three cuts, and then you've got the main part there, and that's forever. What happens if somebody new comes in and buys the farm part? Well, we've already got the three cuts. They buy the farm, a new person buys the farm, do they go back and get three cuts again, or no?
No, it runs with the parent tract. So if those cuts to the original piece occurred after that March 1, 1970 date, that parcel's exhausted its cuts.
And there can be no more cuts?
There can be no more cuts.
And if that same farmer has four farms, and three farms have no road front, and he doesn't have, he can't develop those cuts, I mean, those farms at all, if there's no road front? Or do we make exceptions sometimes?
There's really no exception process. I mean, it does fall within our subdivision regulations, meaning that if they can't demonstrate they meet any of those requirements, the subdivision variance process would be afforded to them. It's very rare.
Very rare. Okay. My concern, and I'm pleased there's this many numbers, to me, it seems like a lot more houses are being built. Maybe I'm just not counting right, but I didn't...
They're pretty visible nowadays, it seems.
In Holy Neckboro particularly, we've got areas of the city, of the Holy Neck section that, and every day, people come to me and say the same thing. We moved out here for the rural, and we don't want to see all these people coming. Of course, they came, but they don't want anybody else to come, but that's all good. But my point being, I just want to make sure that developers aren't able to go in and go in a direction that makes it so that we can't stop them from building houses on property that shouldn't be allowed. See what I'm saying? You hear all these tales about what's going on, but I'm glad to know that we are on top of it, and me, for one, as a councilman, would like to see the rural part of our city stay basically rural, with allowing the farmers to develop what they need to develop, of course. But from what you're saying, though, there shouldn't be that much more building coming forward, because it seems like we're selling off the road front so fast.
That certainly, and that's a great point. At this point, how much property meeting our minimum standards exists that still has its cuts available? That may have a direct correlation to the trends we're seeing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for speaking with us.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. What's the significance of March 1, 1970?
That would be the adoption of our first kind of real subdivision ordinance that regulated the subdivision of land.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Counsel, any other questions or comments concerning this topic? I would recommend that with the next two topics that we have, which are paper streets and infill development, I have a feeling we'll probably get more discussion about those two than we did the first two. I might be wrong, but there's been, you know, a lot of discussion regarding paper streets in the past, and the same thing with infill housing as compared to secondary access in minor subdivisions. So I would like to suggest that in our first work session and our next meeting, that we address those two topics, if that's all right with the city manager, and that will allow us enough time for ample discussion, plus be able to take care of our closed session items. Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll see you next month. Tackle those other two. Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll see you next month, tackle those other two. Okay, we now have a motion for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment appointment and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations, for the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Sister Cities Commission, and the Virginia Municipal League Policy Committees. Item 2, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A5 and A7, the discussion of a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, or, excuse me, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically concerning an EDIP proposal regarding Project Music.
Counsel, a motion has been presented. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
To approve, Mayor.
And a motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Johnson. Second from Councilman Johnson, you hit your button again. Second from Councilman Johnson. So a discussion of the motion. Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Vice Mayor Bennett, can you please cast your vote? The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.